I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Begin the meeting with a moment of silence, as we do if we could keep in mind the family of our town clerk, Don Varley, whose mother, Eva Walters, passed away last week. This meeting is being recorded and televised by a little cable company. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Right.
A motion to accept correspondence in the Reed file.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor? Public forum, now is the time for someone to speak on something that's not on the agenda, if they wish to. Approval of meeting minutes, open session, March 12th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All who's in favor? And the first meeting is scheduled is our, our meeting with the Finance Committee, a joint meeting. Glad you could make it. Richard?
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us.
Would you like to say anything?
I'd just update the board just very briefly to say that we have completed all the meetings with the budget managers of all departments. Tonight, we do have scheduled meetings with a few of the boards, just to kind of connect with them and see how they interact with other boards and committees. But beyond that, we're, we're here to listen. I know Mary Beth and Kathy have been working very diligently on, on the challenging budget. We will probably, you know, when this concluded, maybe add a few comments. But for that, I'll defer to you.
Fine. I'll turn it over to Mary Beth now. Needs to start off this important meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we will be discussing the fiscal '25 budget with Finance Committee to discuss the recent certification of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District's operating assessment to the Town of Whitman and the potential impacts to town services. Before I begin, I'd just like to say that I am one of seven children that attended the schools in the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. I have three children that all attended the Whitman Schools, and I also have three grandchildren that live in Whitman that are or will be attending schools in our district. Four of my siblings have spent their careers in education and administration at the grade school level, the middle school level, and the high school level. I have always been pro schools and pro education, so for anyone to think otherwise, they would be mistaken. I am, however, disheartened because our efforts to hold meetings between the town and the district earlier than in the past didn't result in a more positive collaborative certified operating assessment for the town of Whitman. I am only speaking for myself and not for the Board of Selectmen when I say that I feel that this year and every year going forward, the district should certify their budget, understanding that any amount that the district certifies each year over 5% will need to be placed on the annual town meeting warrant as an override article and a subsequent ballot question at the annual town election for an operational override for the schools. This would simplify the budget process each year for everyone. This will allow the taxpayers of Whitman to decide whether they want to approve this additional increase in funding for the district. If the town decides at any time that they need an override in any future year, then the override would be an operational override for the town and not an operational override for the schools. The town has worked very hard to reduce all department budget requests for fiscal '25 to ensure that an operational override is not put forth to our taxpayers this year. I feel that there is, however, some light at the end of the tunnel. The town is currently funding a Plymouth County retirement unfunded pension liability, which is expected to be fully funded in the year 2029. If this schedule is not extended beyond 2029, the town will only be assessed what's called normal costs going forward each year, beginning in 2030. This new annual amount will be significantly lower than the assessments currently budgeted. And I just want to note that in fiscal '25, the Plymouth County assessment is $3,208,051. My hope would be that in 2030, half of the savings, approximately 1.5 million of the 2.5 million saved, would be put towards the town's OPEB liability, that's Other Post-Employment Benefits Unfunded Liability, and the remainder would be then used to appropriately, appropriately fund our town departments. While the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee is charged with putting forth a budget for the district, I am charged with putting forth a budget to the Board of Selectmen that is balanced and meets the needs of all departments, not just the school department. Since the district certified a budget at their recent school committee meeting last Wednesday evening, voting an increase of 11.03% to the Town's, Town of Whitman's operating assessment, I have been tasked with creating a fiscal 2025 dual budget. This budget shows both a 5% projected increase in the operating assessment in the column marked TA budget and an 11.03% increase in the operating assessment in the column marked alternate budget. The budget column marked alternate budget reflects the potential impact and reductions necessary if the district's certified budget increase of 11.03% is put forth without an override. The draft dual scenario budget has reductions in staff and services included under the alternate budget column, which include the following considerations. All non-union employees raises were eliminated for fiscal 2025. We laid off the following positions or would in this draft scenario: three police officers, three firefighters, one DPW employee, one employee in the clerk's office, one employee in the treasurer-collective's office, one employee in the Sessors' office, two part-time COA employees, our technology specialist. We've also added in closing the library. Keep in mind, if the library is ultimately closed, the town would lose its certification and would not, and would need to operate for one full year in compliance before being certified again, which would result in a loss of state aid. In fiscal 2024, the town is expected to receive $40,817 in library state aid. We also included in that alternate budget shutting down the recreation department. The reductions also include reducing three employees from full-time positions to part-time positions. These reductions in the budget are drastic and debilitating to the town if an override is not put forth at the May annual town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any reactions or questions? I'd just like to echo, I hate to echo things because it's like wasting time to echo things. But when, when Mary Beth was talking about her connection to the schools and her family, I've always been a schools guy also. But I'm as concerned as she is about what's going on these, this year. I was on the school committee for 14 years. And then at some points in that career, I actually was able to get the town meeting to override what the Finance Committee wanted to do for the schools and the current superintendent. This goes back a long, a long way. I have a sister who was on the school committee for a number of years. She was the chair for a number of years. And I have a son who actually served on the school committee at the same time as my sister did. So we are, we are school people. And this is a painful year that we're looking at right now. I just wanted to echo that. As far as sentiment is concerned, I know what Mary Beth is going through. Does anyone have any, have any questions or, or comments?
Yes, I wanted to recognize Mary Beth's effort in putting this together from when we received the assessment last Wednesday evening. Because to balance a budget in just a couple of days, I know that you worked through the weekend. I saw you here during the Easter egg hunt. So yeah, thank you for, for getting this together.
Anyone else? Yeah, Rick?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, while we're on the subject of schools, I'd just like to defer to Kathleen Otina. You know, done a lot of work looking at the school budget and, and going through it really with a fine tooth comb. So there's some recommendations that Kathleen and, these recommendations actually have, have been part of the Finance Committee's standing agenda for many years. With respect to non-mandated busing, I think everybody's aware, you know, that has been historical changes with respect to that and our liabilities. But I, I just want to turn it over to Kathleen. She sent out an email today regarding recommendations for non-mandated busing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mary Beth, for this incredible amount of work that you put through. And I'll start off by saying that I did send a letter to the Superintendent of Schools and the Chair of the School Committee, saying, "It pains me to send this letter. I consider myself to be a school advocate." I don't think anyone would not recognize that I have been a school advocate. But I was disheartened when the vote last Wednesday night was, they didn't touch a penny. They didn't touch a single item, knowing that both towns are in trouble and that, I don't know if this is called a game of chicken, let's see who blinks first, or do we just, as a town, not support the school budget? Because I don't believe we can call for a school override. It's not within our purview. Legal counsel can, you know, differ with me if he or she wants to, but we can't say, "We'll fund you if you go for an override." There are two items on the current school budget that I identified to the superintendent and to the chair. And one of them is non-mandated school busing. I was on the regional agreement committee, amendment committee, as a non-voting member for the past two years. And my one goal was to have the transportation language in the regional agreement, regional agreement amended to reflect wording that would more fairly assess the Town of Whitman for the non-mandated busing, for busing in general. Right now, the school committee has within their authority the ability to just vote busing, mandated and non-mandated, and split it 60/40. Or they can choose not to support non-mandated busing, separate that out, and then they bill the towns for their costs of non-mandated busing. Not 60/40, but their costs. And I shared with the superintendent and the chair, and I believe I've shared with my chair and Mary Beth, that the cost of having this dual language, that we split 60/40 the mandated costs after reimbursement, and yet each town pays its full ticket for the non-mandated, it costs the Town of Whitman at least $40,000 or up to $80,000 in fiscal '25. One solution would be for the school committee to have voted, "We will pay for busing." And we will split it, at this point, it's like 61.8% to 38.2%. And that would save the Town of Whitman, and it would spare the school committee the potential of someone like myself opposing the article appropriating money, the $181,000 in non-mandated busing costs. They've chosen to ignore me. I know that I was a non-voting member of that regional committee, but I made my suggestions loud and clear to both chairs, Chair Chris Howard the first year and Chris Scriven this year. There is money to be found in this budget, this school budget, that does not affect the quality of education provided to the children. It's not eliminate the Esser people. I've, I made it clear in a letter to the editor that those children, our children, still need the support to close the gap that COVID has caused. But there are other places in this school budget that should be looked at. There are unsupportable small class sizes, and I pointed out to the superintendent two instances, a sixth grade class size of 16 in, in one middle school and 18 in the eighth grade. He admitted that he made a mistake about the sixth grade. It was five sections, not six. And I said, "Well, does that mean your budget has six salaries or five?" And he ignored my attention, my questioning of the eighth grade. Eighth graders in a class size of 18, when our first and second graders are already in a class of 20, which is a good class size. That was ignored. And then at last Wednesday's school committee meeting, there was a creative explanation as to how it's crucial that the unique characteristics of the middle school eighth grade team required six teachers. I don't care about the teachers. We are not an employment agency. I care about the children. And going from six sections to five sections in that eighth grade would have increased their class sizes from 18 to 20. So that's just the tip of the iceberg. So as I said, I wrote, "It pains me to write this letter, but..." I had no idea that these cuts, the nature of these cuts were coming. I had a sense that we've got to find the money someplace. And during my five years on the Finance Committee, I've gotten to know the chairs or the department heads of the various boards, and I'd love to support everything they asked for. Forget about cutting them back, particularly Mary Holland, when she's asking for janitorial services for the senior center. That's maybe $10,000, and the schools can't cut one teacher for $71,000. I know it doesn't transfer over, but it's time to call someone's bluff. Again, I don't support a school override. I don't believe we can. Let town council figure that one out. But I am prepared to say that I will not support this budget as presented by the school committee, this assessment of $19,695,553. They have some work to do. And if we go to town meeting, prepared to defend the budgets that our town departments need, and they haven't made any work to get to the table and negotiate, then they, I don't know what happens. Do we go back to this ping pong match we were told about in 2020? We send it back to them. They have to reconsider their vote. It comes back to us. Then there's a super town meeting. Then we go for one 12th budgets based on fiscal '24. It's a disaster. But I really resent the lack of cooperation shown by the school department when I know that you've invited school department officials to meet with you and talk about the stresses, both you and Lisa Green, talk about the stresses that both towns are under. I know that I watched the March 12th Hanson Board of Selectmen meeting, or Select Board meeting, and they're looking at an override as well. So no one likes the word override. And at some point in time, both towns are going to have to face up to the fact that the 1980 legislation needs to be tweaked. But not at the, not at the state, at this stage, where one big department, one very big department, just sat there last Wednesday night, and with one exception out of the 10, didn't ask a single question. So I will stop there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, I do think we need to pause just for a second and kind of process what, what Mary Beth Cadda, what she revealed. I mean, it's terrible, terrible. This is a difficult conversation. And honestly, I think communities are judged by how well they have difficult conversations. We talk in numbers and we're talking accounting, but behind those numbers are people, real people who live in our community, you know. And I think we do need to move forward with, on both sides, with, you know, respect and compassion for what we're talking about, because it's, it was a really hard week. It was an exceptionally hard week. And again, I, I commend Mary Beth Cadda for, for shouldering that burden and having to come up with this budget was terrible, terrible. Moving forward, you know, I think, I think the people on the school committee made that decision, not so much as, I mean, you're very good at looking at details and, you know, going through a budget with a fine tooth comb. And I think that's very, that's excellent. And you ask hard questions. It seemed to me that the school committee simply said, "If we need a budget, if we need an override, let's ask for a level service override." That seems to be the best case scenario. They didn't, in my, in my opinion of what happened there, they didn't say, "We're gonna, we're gonna fund this budget, and it's gonna be at the expense of the towns." That didn't seem to be the intention of the school committee. It seemed to be for a snapshot in time where we're at right now, we need an override, we might as well ask for a level service, and then we're gonna open up discussions with the Town of Hanson and the Town of Whitman so that we can see how we move forward. The unfortunate thing about that is, as soon as they, they assess that number, then we have to come up with a balanced budget. And that's, people have to see the drastic nature of what that, what that would be. So that was kind of my interpretation of what happened. And I'm not exactly sure how we're gonna, how things are gonna move forward. But I would say, you said we can't force an override. That's simply a schools with a separate article. We can't. But I do think there are reasonable, reasonable people in Hanson. I think there are reasonable people on the school committee. And they know, just like we know, we don't want to go to town meeting with this budget and going against each other. That's toxic for all parties involved. We want to go in with a game plan that we can all support. And for me, I think, I'm willing to listen carefully to what they have to say. I try to attend a lot of meetings. But I think if, if we just clearly discuss our, our perspective and lay out what we're trying to do, it's a reasonable plan. And I'm hoping that they'll, they'll get on board with that plan.
Yes.
Just for point of clarification, I don't, I, I was at the school committee meeting. I didn't recall the school at all talking about an override. I think they set the budget that was in the five-year plan, a very close to the five-year plan that they provided. It's on their website. And, and they moved forward with that. I think what was said was, and I think it was printed in the, the newspaper, was that there's no such thing as a school override. Essentially, once you raise the levy, it goes back in. I think if we need to raise levy, we raise the levy for everyone, essentially.
John?
Just quickly, immediately after the vote, I got up to the microphone and I said, "Does that mean you're still open to an override?" And Beth said, "Yes." And Chris Scriven nodded his head, and they were saying, "Yes, they're wanting to work with us about an override." That's my...
That wasn't a vote. That was two people. That's all I'm saying. I, I didn't hear, the statements that were said in the meeting was not, were, I mean, are you open to an override? Essentially, it's not a school override. It's an, it's a, if we do an override, it's an override for everything. It, it wasn't just the schools that, you know, Mary Beth did cuts, but we grew in, in the, in the towns. We have new jobs in the towns in that same period of time. So.
Yes.
The way the budget is laid out there with the TA budget and the alternate budget, the TA budget, the way that I have reduced, drastically reduced, the department's requests does not cause the town to need an operational override. The only reason that I feel an operational override would be needed this year is because of the difference between the 5% operating assessment and the 11.03 put forward. I did what the schools did as well. I took everybody who would be laid off or had their positions reduced from part-time to, uh, full-time to part-time. And I also added in unemployment costs. So 1.069 was the difference, basically, the increase from the 5% to the 11. On top of that, I had to add over $400,000 for unemployment. So I had to cut 1.5. And that, and everything I did, I had a meeting on last Thursday, after the school committee meeting Wednesday evening, I called all departments together. I said, "I haven't even started this yet, but I have to put together a worst-case scenario balanced budget." And I said, "I just want everyone to know, so nobody's shocked, everything will be on the table. Zero raises, layoffs, closing departments, using more free cash." And so I made everyone aware. And as I really got into it, I didn't think that I would have to hit every single one of those to reach the number. And as I did this on Saturday and Sunday, I'm like, "Oh my goodness, I really do have to close this, and I really have to strip all raises, and I have to reduce these positions." And it just got worse and worse because it's a large number when you're taking $38,000 for one position or $17,000 COA part-time employee. To get to 1.5, I had to decimate the budget. So the override, operational for the schools, operational for the town, just call it operational. The reason is, the only reason is, because of the difference that the schools certified from 5 to 11. Call it what you want, but had they come in at 5%, I would not be suggesting an override this year. I feel we can live along for five years, and that's hard. But what we've done as well is I've asked every department to look at their fees and to see what they can increase for fees. The fire department came in yesterday. They're raising their ALS, if I'm correct, ALS-1 fees. That's bringing in a tremendous amount of revenue, which helped this budget. I asked the treasurer-collector, "Go up on your demand fees." $15, he's going to 25. I've asked the police, the selectmen. This evening, I'm handing around a packet with all the fees for the selectmen's office. And Lori, Kathy, and I have looked at that. And a lot of those fees haven't been raised in many, many years. It's time. So we're looking at everything for, for revenue and fees. But in my mind, the only reason we would need an override is definitely because of the difference in the school assessment. Thank you.
Is the bus still?
Uh, excuse me. Yes, Rick. I just want to say it's gonna just take the Finance Committee a bit of time to digest the, the dual scenario budget. I think it is an enormous amount of work, but mindful of the fact we have four meetings before we have to make our recommendations and get them published for town meeting. So I, I hate to think we're gonna be in the same place as we were last year, but it looks like that's where we're going. So I commend the town administrator for the work that she's done in the Board of Selectmen for what they will do. But also, I am, I am hopeful that the school committee will again reconvene and reconsider this assessment so that we can work together to, to, to make a solution that, that doesn't include these kind of cuts, because nobody wants to see this.
Yeah, I want to also acknowledge with the, the work that Kathy did. And coming up, what you've done so far, and actually sending a letter to the superintendent. We'll see if that has an effect. Two, two letters.
I said, "I want to continue this conversation."
Okay.
I haven't heard back from that one.
Yes, Justin.
And I just kind of want to put the timeline out there. As I said, at the school committee meeting last week, the Board of Selectmen has to vote to place an override on the ballot at our next meeting in two weeks. If we are going to request an override, it's going to have to be at our next meeting. So this, we don't have a lot of time to make this decision, if that's the direction we're gonna go.
What date is that, Justin?
So it would be April 9th? April 9th. The deadline, I think, is April 11th or 12th, but...
Anyone else? Yes?
I want to thank Mary Beth, Board of Selectmen, and definitely the Finance Committee for the hard work that they do. I was on the Finance Committee, I've been on the School Committee. School budgets, when I was on the school committee, was, what's the budget that we want, that we can add things and make our school the best school in the district? That's number one. The second budget we came in was number one. In the third budget we came in, what could the community afford? And a lot of times, we were lucky to get a nice budget with some additional stuff. There were times, a level funded budget, but there were some times they had to make cuts. And I feel right now that the school committee has to do their job, make some difficult cuts. The town's looking at some difficult cuts. We all have to work together. So in, you know, there's a lot of people in this town that are having trouble affording with a new school, new fire, uh, DPW, the potential of the South Shore, taxes are going up. I walked down one street last week, an intersection of town, every third house looked like it was in disrepair because the people couldn't afford, they had cars in the yard that were 20 years old. The house looked terrible. I think these people can't afford it. So I think we have to look at everything. It's a whole community. It's not just the schools. It's not just the fire department. It's everybody. So keep up the good work, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you.
Rosemary, you had your, were you gonna say something?
In years past, we had a separate line for busing, and I think Kathy addressed it. That's not something we have to, we can, we don't have to vote that. We've talked about that in the past. Many other towns in the area do not have that busing. It's crummy. Nobody wants it. But essentially, we have to preserve the core education, core services. And that's kind of where we're at. And I may be considering some of those things that we just don't have to fund, that don't hurt the core service, that really do hurt some level of ease on the parents and the home, but, but not the core service.
Anything else? Guess we gotta go back to work.
Back to work?
Back to work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll give it. We'll give it, give the Finance Committee a chance to clear the room. And they could be.
Drop down the new business.
Yep, we can't do the first thing, but we can start to do the others. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through the agenda under new business. We have some executive sessions that will be starting and we're scheduled to start in 15 minutes, some of which aren't going to happen. Uh, we're gonna pass over them. But, um, I think I'll get down to new business. We will not talk about Mass Cop MOU because we have to have a, uh, strategy session and executive session to, to, uh, to deal with that first uh, before we can hopefully announce a vote. Um, so let's just go down to act on the right of first refusal for affordable housing unit at 100 Franklin Street. Mary Beth?
Yes. Uh, so we do receive a letter.
Oh, I'm sorry. And at, at 6:40, we'll do, um, the public meeting with respect to the, uh, application of, looks like Brothers RV. Okay, we'll do a little of that at, uh, 6:40. Yes, sorry.
No, no problem. So CHAPA, the Citizens Housing and Planning Association, did send a letter, uh, at the end of February to John Gold Rosen, uh, the Zoning Board of Apale's chair, stating that there is a unit, uh, that is, um, going up for sale for, and the resale price is 218,988. The town has a 60-day right of refusal on that property. Um, and basically, uh, John Gold Rosen, um, did say in his opinion, the town should decline to exercise the right and allow CHAPA to proceed to sell the unit. As, uh, the letter explains, when the unit is sold to qualified purchaser, the unit will continue to be subject to an affordable housing deed restriction. So therefore, if we just, uh, don't do anything and don't exercise that right of first refusal, you know, to purchase, then it will stay as an affordable housing and we need the affordable housing units, uh, that we have. So I think that, um, that we should, the board should, um.
Refuse.
Refuse, absolutely.
Someone like to make a motion to refuse.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we, uh, ref- we refuse.
Any, any question?
Just a, uh, maybe a brief question. Um, so I think, uh, this may be a good opportunity to say the town may want to look into establishing an affordable housing trust so that if one of these were to come up that we wished to exercise, we would have an available pot of money to do so. At the moment, I don't think we could actually fund.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of refusing? Act on the request to hold the 156th Annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 27th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Act on the request of Town Clerk Don Varley to reappoint Michelle Winnett to the position of registrar for the period of April 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2027.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Michael Ganchard, on behalf of Whitman and Hanson Dollars for Scholars, to declare April as Dollars for Scholars Month. Your motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I've been doing it for years.
Except to honor Michael Ganchard for his hard work and doing for years.
Outstanding gentleman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Michael Ganchard, on behalf of Whitman and Hanson Dollars for Scholars, to erect a fundraising thermometer on the town hall lawn from April to the end of May.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Set April meeting schedule. We know we're gonna have a meeting on April 9th and then it's in April 24th if you want to. Does that make sense?
April 23rd is likely the day would finalize the warrant, too.
Sweet.
Perfect.
Okay, I've got five minutes for the chairman's report. I guess I can do that. We're just about at the one-year anniversary of Mary Beth Carter and her teammate, Kathy O'Keefe, as a, a town administrator, assistant town administrator. I'd just like to read a checklist of the kinds of things that Mary Beth has been involved with over the past year. I used to say about Frank Lineham that I never saw him in town hall when he wasn't working. Um, I can easily say about Mary Beth Carter that I'd never talked to her or see her when she isn't working, whether she's in the town hall or not. She's just constantly on the job. An amazing bunch of energy going on there. She was appointed as a member of the following committees and positions. These are the things that she does regularly. Capital Committee, the DPW Building Committee, the Whitman School Building Committee, the Bylaw Study Committee, the Mayflower Municipal Health Group Steering Committee, Regional Agreement Committee, Assistant Parking Clerk, Auction Permit Agent, Affirmative Action Representative, Fair Housing Committee, and Fair Housing Officer. She put forth a balanced budget for the fiscal year 2024 annual town meeting and is working very hard to try to do the same thing again this year. Uh, oversaw the design, bidding, funding, and contracting operations for the new DPW building, put forth special legislation for the borrowing associated with the DPW building project, put forth a right to farm bylaw, sought and received the designation of farmland of local importance, calculated the taxpayer impact for the borrowing to demolish and build the new Whitman Middle School under several different options, choosing one that saved the town $20 million over the, over the period of the law.
Thank you.
$20 million. She put forth an article for additional funding for the DPW passed at the October special town meeting, calculated the taxpayer impact for the additional costs associated with the DPW building project, implemented the recording and submissions of the audio recordings of town boards and committee meetings to WHCA TV for public access, met with good energy, good energy, not with good energy, but with good energy, capital G, capital E, for the purpose of entering a municipal choice aggregation program for Whitman residents and businesses approved by the Board of Selectmen, coordinated and scheduled with the assistant town administrator the Fox Channel zip trip to Whitman, arranged and coordinated the bicycle option, Plymouth County Retirement and Social Security Representation for Employees, instrumental contract negotiations with Police Chief, Deputy Police Chief, and the Fire Chief. She's been a busy woman over the past year and we're really lucky to have her.
Thank you.
You know what you've been doing in your spare time?
I work and I sleep.
And now I'd like to turn it over to Mary Beth Carter to say something about her sidekick.
Absolutely. Do you think I have time or do you want to wait till after we do the 6:40?
You know what? Why don't we do the 6:40?
Okay.
People will have to hold their breath. Okay, for her sidekick. Okay. Okay, a public meeting now with the application for Brothers RV, Frank Williams and Dylan Mitchell for a Class II Auto Dealer's License on the premises located at 410 Bedford Street, subject to the receipt of a surety bond as acquired by MGL Chapter 141, Section 58, the license fee of $100, the surrender of the current license at the location, and final inspection approval by the building commissioner. If approved, act to rescind the Class II Auto Dealer's License held by Mandy's RV Center at the same location. Is, is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And we'll, we can, yeah, first to approve and then we'll do another motion to rescind. But you must be the people, right?
Yes.
Would you like to say something? Advertise, advertise your business or whatever.
Just very excited to get started and have this transfer over smoothly and effortlessly. Hopefully everything goes good.
Okay, okay. Any, anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Uh, I remember the la, um, when, uh, we did that before, there was an issue with if you're doing repair work on one of them in the back or in the front, that it blocks it off, the fire department can't get around there if there's an issue. Uh, you know, parking the, the, you know, the vehicles, you know, because they're, they're, um, they're RVs, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the large ones, is there gonna be enough space if you park them somewhere and doing work on them in the back that the fire department can get something around there for services?
We have a bay big enough to fit in, uh, like a 40, no problem.
Because I know that that was an issue when we first, when you first opened up or whoever had it before that, you know, where there was an, and you had to move some stuff around and make some things for parking for other vehi, you know, for customers and things.
Now, the building commissioner will be approving this.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, beginning, there was a little confusion on where, where exactly the, the fire lanes and stuff like that was. I think that was in the beginning, uh, when we first opened under Mandy's RVs.
Yeah.
I think we have a better understanding of what, uh, we need to do and where to keep vehicles at. So I don't think that should be an issue anymore.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of, uh, approving the application?
Yes.
Subject to the, those conditions. Okay, and I also like, I'd like a motion now to rescind the Class II Auto Dealer's License held by, uh, Mandy's RV Center at the same location.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Yes.
Hi, uh, Rob, control building commissioner. I'd just like just to mention to them that they should come to my office to schedule that appointment so I can.
Okay. And you know where his office is? His office is downstairs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew where it is.
Okay.
Um, we were also wondering, would it be, is there a way that we could add them to the existing license?
Add who?
My brother-in-law.
Yeah, we have the, like, the license from the Mandy's RV that we have. Would it be possible to just add them to that license and, and change the name instead of getting a whole new license?
I don't know.
This is, this isn't a license, right? It's, uh, Brothers RV.
Yes.
Right.
Um, but we're all, you know, the same family. But I, we wanted, I want them to be on the license as well. So instead of issuing like a whole new license, is there a way to just add them onto the, the Mandy's RV license?
No, we just, we, I'm, I'm confused. We just rescinded Mandy's RV.
Okay.
Right? Isn't that what we did?
That's the vote we took.
Yeah.
What?
That was the vote we just took.
That was the vote we just took. We just rescinded that app, that application. That license is no longer.
Okay.
Now we have a license for Brothers RV under the names of Frank Williams and Dylan Mitchell. And that's, and that's the one that, uh, Mr. Picarilly will be inspecting and approving.
Okay.
And they'll be the names on the license. Yes, Bob?
So just so, I, I understand, this is just a business change? You're just changing the license, the individuals that are on a license. You, you still, you're still held to all the same stipulations that you had before. You're just looking, you're just looking to have different people on the license? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I wanted them to, um, you know, be able to have ownership.
You need to make sure they adhere to it.
It's probably cleaner the way you're doing it.
Yeah, I think so. Cleaner this way.
Yeah, he still has it inspected, yeah.
Yeah.
Pardon, I, I'm not hearing you.
Cleaner, cleaner the way you've done it.
Oh, okay. I like to be clean, okay.
You're just changing the license to a different.
Right, right.
Yeah, but Rob, I would say inspect it anyways to make sure they're following through on what is supposed to be done.
Correct. And that's why they should schedule.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I said.
Would we be able to, at that point, discuss, um, about having additional parking spaces in the back?
You, you'd have to go back to the ZBDA.
Maybe you guys can have this conversation at a different time. Okay. That's, that's okay. Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At a minute, we know.
Okay, we have a couple of executive sessions to deal with. One is pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct collective bargaining sessions with Mass Cop. And we're going to, um, pass by that. And we're gonna do an executive session. Let's see, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Mass Cop.
Oh, sorry, I'm showing you.
Point of order, I don't think you want to pass by that.
Which one? The first one?
The first one.
Are you sure?
Yes, I am.
A collective, but we don't have anybody here to bargain with, dear.
Um, yes, we do.
We do?
We have strategy as it relates to.
That's, strategy is what I just said.
Okay, I apologize.
Didn't I? I think. I ov, I passed over the one that said to con, to conduct collective bargaining sessions, which I don't believe we're doing.
This is my shop and agenda.
This is.
It's supposed to be the easy part of the meeting.
We didn't want to let her finish with Kathy before.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, that first one, um, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Mass Cop is the one that we do need to.
That's not the first one. The first, the first one is not that.
Right, that's the one.
She needs the second one.
Right.
Strategy, we're not doing that, right?
Right.
The 6:45?
You were correct, Carl.
Well, falls in line, we just do it all one shot.
You have four, you have four executive sessions. I mean, the second, the third, and the fourth.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I was coming from another meeting and I was afraid I.
But you know what? Before we go into executive session, what I'd like to do is to have Mary Beth speak about her assistant town administrator.
Awesome.
And then we'll go in, then we'll go into executives' sessions three, uh, two, three, and four.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town has been without an assistant town administrator for a few years with all the changes that the town has gone through. And I have to say that the assistant town administrator Kathy Keefe has been so instrumental in all the work that we've accomplished, uh, in the office. Some of the things that she has done is procurement. She, the town was awarded one free designee at no cost, um, for education towards the designation of the Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official. And so normally that is something that the town pays for, you know, to have somebody certified. So Kathy was able to, to get that free for the town. And she has completed all of the courses, um, A, B, and C, um, which is public contracting overview, supplies and services contracting, and design and construction contracting. To be completed just this week is a webinar, Design and Construction Law Considerations. After that, she will have completed everything for procurement. And that was one of the main items that I wanted Kathy to take care of when she was hired. So thank you for doing all that and all that work. She also has set up user accounts and arranged training for department heads through the State Operational Services Division for access to statewide contract purchasing with COMBIs. So we had a department head meeting. We want everybody to start using COMBIs or checking COMBIs just to make sure that we're getting state contracted prices and saving money before they just call a vendor. And so that has been great. Thank you. Also, as far as grants, um, the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, she was awarded the second of two grants to continue and finalize work with the Barrett Planning Group for the zoning bylaw amendment for the MBTA Communities Overlay District. A public hearing is scheduled by the Planning Board for Monday, April 8th, for this zoning bylaw amendment to be included on the warrant for the upcoming, um, annual town meeting. Also, she's been involved with the Community Compact Best Practices, awarded consultation services with the Mass Department of Revenue for financial trend monitoring and costing out collective bargaining proposals. So these were grants, it's not a dollar amount that we receive, but we receive, um, the time, from the Mass Department of Revenue. They're going to, you know, connect us with the people to take care of, um, these things. So that's great. It saved the town a lot of money. Also, with the Old Colony Planning Council, she's received assistance with creating a new open space and recreation plan in the amount of $30,000. The Whitman Community Preservation Act funds awarded $30,000 for Whitman's share of the $60,000 cost to create a new open space and recreation plan. And having this plan in place will open opportunities for funding with conservation and recreation restrictions and their respective uses. She's also the Chair of the Camp Alice Carlton Committee, which is a committee that is, um, was formed after last year's meeting to see what. which is a committee that is um, was formed after last year's meeting to see what can be done and um, to bring something forth uh, to the taxpayers on that land. Whether we sell it, keep it, leave it as is. So she's working hard on that initiative as well. Also, under the community One Stop for Growth for fiscal twenty-two, fiscal twenty twenty-five Executive Office for Economic Development, she's applied for a forty R, forty Y, Smart Growth Starter Home Zoning Grant and a Branding and Wayfinding Grant. And I have to say that Justin, you have been just instrumental and a great help with all these grants. Uh, that's one of your specialties and we appreciate all that assistance. Another item that Kathy was tasked with and one of the items I wanted her to take care of when um, in this position was getting the town's fleet schedule together for a few years that really hasn't, we haven't had somebody that really could, you know, put the time and attention to see that all the vehicles that we have are properly registered and that um, everything that should have come off the rolls has come off the rolls. All the new vehicles are on and what vehicles um, are in each department. So Kathy did a townwide fleet uh, schedule and it's been reconciled with various departments and updated with Maya for insurance coverage. So that was a big task and I'm glad that that's now up to date. She's also been working on the Comcast License Renewal. Kathy's been working with attorney Bill Solomon and WHCA Executive Director Eric Dresser to bring forth a license agreement between the town and Comcast. The current license expires on June second of twenty twenty-four and if I'm not mistaken, that's a ten-year?
It is ten years.
Ten-year license, so it's only ten years. And what a process, you may remember it was a few months ago that there was a presentation here. So it's um, a very involved process. Also, human resources, that's one area that Kathy and I have been concentrating on and Kathy's been doing a lot on that. I really wanna improve the onboarding uh, for all new employees. Um, so now we've changed it so that all new employees, everyone except for detail officers, they will get their paperwork from um, Kathy's office and we will go through start to finish and I want to get all the documents update, updated and I'd like to even see that people could just, you know, fill them out uh, online and then send it back to us. So that's something we're uh, working on, would like to bring up to date and streamline. Kathy's done a great job with that. And also the tran- transportation to Norfolk Aggie and Bristol Aggie. Kathy coordinated the transportation for students attending Norfolk Aggie and arranged and contracted for transportation to Bristol Aggie. And what Kathy had to go through last year for the Bristol Aggie School to just get one student from Whitman, we have to pay the full cost on that and we had to coordinate with Hanson, they had two students going to Bristol. But that was done, it worked on all summer and it was right down to the wire to secure-
The day before school began.
Right, it was quite a task, but you did that and that was great. So I can't thank you enough for everything you do every day. Um, just to help the office run smoothly and the town run smoothly, you've done a great job.
You know, the only other thing that we have on the agenda besides the executive session is the administrator's report.
Oh.
Do you have a long report or?
No, real quick, two things.
Okay, while we do that, now we can go into executive session and
Okay.
We can dismiss the rest of you people.
So the first item that I wanted to mention is an assessment valuation issue. The town, the assessors' office and the selectmen's office is currently working with the assessors appraisal vendor to identify an assessment valuation discrepancy which affected several of the fiscal twenty twenty-five personal property, third and fourth quarter bills issued on January first, twenty twenty-four. The fiscal twenty-five real estate bills were unaffected, so we're speaking about personal property. Once the town identifies the full extent of the issue, I will update the Board of Selectment at a future meeting. So I just wanted you all to be aware of that. And the other item is um, has to do with Plymouth County Opera Funds. I was contacted last week by the Plymouth County Treasurer's Office that the town's grant request for the Plymouth County Opera Program for a new ambulance was approved and the Plymouth County Commissioners would like to attend the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, which I was hoping would be April ninth and it is, so that's great, to present a check to the town in the amount of five hundred thirty-four thousand twenty-eight dollars and ninety cents. This check, along with the check the town received last month in the amount of two point two million, exhausted the full amount of the Plymouth County Opera Grant funds allocated to the town of Whitman. So we put in for just two grants to ta- get all of the money. I've also reached out to the Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, and told him that if there are any funds which become available, which were due to other towns, uh, due to other towns not using all of their allocations because believe it or not, some towns don't put in or don't have projects uh, for all of their funds and it goes back into the pool. I let him know that Whitman would be very interested in being considered for any additional funds and we could use those towards towns' uh, technology needs, for one. So we're always looking to anywhere we can.
Anyone have any questions?
No, but I'd like to say uh, we had uh, Plymouth County when we had our uh, meeting and dinner, right? I think Sean and, and Justin were with us and Tom O'Brien got up and commended our town and you for going with the full amount of money that we've exhausted it unless there's any money left over and that other towns should look at what Whitman did and maybe follow through and, you know, and use the funds that are allotted to them. And I'm saying to myself, well, no, Tom, be quiet because we maybe if I get some more, you know?
I didn't wanna leave one penny on the table.
Right, exactly, so um, kudos to you for making sure that the monies that were allowed this town, every penny was received. Thank you.
Definitely, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we need a, a motion to go into, to three executive sessions. We'll only be, we'll be coming into open session afterwards only to announce a vote if, if one of those sessions results in a vote about a memorandum of agreement. So uh, executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Mass Cop if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. And an executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Whitman Firefighters Union, Local seventeen sixty-nine, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. And finally, an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Chapter three, Section twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Uh, and that would be the fire chief. So is there a motion for the two of those three?
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we're in executive session. Uh, we may come back into open session to announce a vote.
I can hand these down.
Sure.
These are the fees that this-
Okay, we're back in open session?
Oh, I'll keep this one in here.
I could have your attention, please. Um, we're back in open session and uh, we voted while we were in executive session to approve an agreement with Mass Cop on a memorandum of understanding that dealt with the sick leave system for the police department. And that's the end of, that's the end of our business for today.
We need to take it to Michelle.
I mean, Michelle. Mary Beth would like to say something because someone is leaving today.
Yes, our reconnoisseur secretary, Michelle Allen, is, tonight is your last night um, and we just wanna thank you. You've been wonderful to work with and we're gonna miss you.
You've been totally, been totally terrific.
Yes.
Thank you.
Wish you well in your new chapter.
Oh.
I'm not too sure.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure either.
Uh, we have to take that vote that we voted in exec, we voted in open session?
We may. Contract, we typically do. Yeah, why don't we do that now?
I think so.
Why doesn't someone move to, to approve the memorandum of standing with Mass Cop about this new sick leave system?
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Your second. Okay, all those in favor? And now a motion to, after we got all that junk out of the way. What, um, we have a motion to adjourn will be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.